I show six o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Charter Township of Garfield Board to order, and we'll start off with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Anne, take a roll for us?
Schmuckle?
Here.
Agustinelli?
Here.
Laney McManus?
Here.
Lap?
Here.
Corn?
Here.
Joe McManus?
Here.
And it's noted that McCumber is absent and excused.
All right, thank you. First item on the agenda is public comment. We have public comment at the beginning and at the end of our meetings, so we'll open up public comment if anybody has something they'd like to come up and say. Now's the time to do that. And as is normally the case, I don't see anybody running forward, so we'll go ahead and close public comment and move on to item two, review and approval of the agenda, and if anybody has any conflict of interest, now would be the time to state those. The only thing I have is the MMR representative had to go home sick from work today, so the MMR report will not be on coming tonight, so item D under reports will be canceled.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
Amended.
Thank you, I couldn't think of that word.
Support.
Motion means supported to approve the amended agenda. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Such request will may hold on. There we go. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening, you have minutes from January 28th, 2025, recommend approval. Bills from the general fund, $104,479.05, recommend approval. Parks and Recreation Commission annual report for 2024, receive and file. Township strategic plan 2024 year-end report, receive and file. And consideration of amending the address for High Tops TC LLC Class C License Resolution 2025-04-T, recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there any items that the board, any board member would like to have removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda? Any items the public would like to have removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda? Any of them staff would like to have removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda? Hearing none, Anne, could you have a roll call?
May I make a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, let's just do it, no.
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Support.
Thank you, I apologize for that. Motion means supported to approve the consent calendar as read. Any further discussion on that motion? Now could we have a roll call, Anne?
Corn?
Yes.
Schmuckle?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
L. McManus?
Yes.
And Jay McManus?
Yes, thank you. Keep me on track, Lee. Go over there, Chuck, keep me on track, Chuck.
Good track.
All right, since we have no items removed from the consent calendar, we'll move on to correspondence. I don't see any, so we'll go ahead on to reports, and we start off with the county commissioner's report.
Good evening, everyone. Lauren Flynn, County Commissioner, District Two. Since I've seen you last, we've had a study session and a regular meeting, both with the topics of safe harbor. With, after the study session, it was brought to a vote last week for the county to be the final piece of the puzzle for the funding to ensure that safe harbor is open year-round. That is coming with some stipulations requiring metrics, reports to us, and us having to see the task force to dive deeper into a more robust plan to help with the homeless issue. I have met with manager Barshaf and spoken to him and gotten a lot more detailed information about the city, Garfield Water. It has come to the, others of the county and the community are aware of it as well, so it is on everyone's radar, so I'm hoping it is on their agenda for next Tuesday's meeting. I will be there when it is on the agenda. And finally, we had coffee with the county over at the Curling Club last week. It was pretty well-turned, turnout. Were you there, John? I don't remember. All these events are all mushed in my head, but it was a good turnout, had some great conversations with some constituents, met with a nice man from, he was, I think, lived in the city, but he had concerns with Garfield, so it was nice to talk and have people show up. He lived right at the border on Boone sidewalks, but he was very nice. So that, what I have, I have nothing else, really. Any questions tonight? As always, you can find my information on the county website. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Sheriff's report.
Good evening, Roy Rasko of the Sheriff's Department. Nothing too exciting. January was pretty busy with people running into one another countywide. It looked like we handled 232 crashes, and 84 of those were in Garfield Township. Looks like the guys rode a little over 100 tickets for the month, and 57 of those were issued in Garfield Township, so. Four drunk driving arrests in the township out of, it's like 21, four of them were in the township, and then 57 criminal arrests were made in Garfield. And somehow, we had 11 car deer accidents also during the month. This past month, one of the only really fun things that were done that I can think of, I had deputy Evan Hart meet with the Girl Scout troop, and they did a fun demonstration up at King's Court. She did some different evidence work with them, she's one of our evidence techs, and it turned, it was really well-received, and they had fun that day. And then, our drone team worked with the Township Parks Department, flew the drones on some of the park properties just to, so they could check on some debris areas and things that Derek and Sean might want to start cleaning up this spring, so the drone guys met with Derek and took care of that a few, I think, last week or the week before, so.
Nice, thanks for that.
That's it.
Thank you. All right, next, GT Metro Fire report.
Good evening, Paul Mackin, Grand Traverse Metro Fire. Before you have the Garfield Metro incidents for January, the total calls for Garfield for the month were 435 as opposed to the total for Metro at 598. Our most common call that we have is medical assist, assisting our EMS crews with 281 in Garfield and 390 as a total within Metro. Other emergency medical services at 45 and 61. Our dispatch and canceled en route, 38 and 46. Again, our alarm system activations without fire. Motor vehicle accidents without injuries, we had nine in Garfield, and pretty much that compiled the total for Metro. Other motor vehicle accidents with injury, five within the township in which we were dispatched to, and then 10, obviously, the sheriff's department responded to a larger number. And then just kind of some routine calls here. I'll kind of note here, going a little bit further down where you see water, water flow alarm, unintentional, we had five within Garfield and seven as a total within Metro, and then below that, the sprinkler activation with no fire, our frozen pipes, you know, and heads with, four for the township, and then five within Metro. Most of those calls happened within a couple-day period when we got out of that real deep cold snap and things started thawing, that's when most of those calls came in, so there was a variety of them there. And as you can see, within the rest of the categories, just, you know, some smaller numbers of incidents there. I'm gonna turn to the second page when we look at our January incidents and the percentage as a whole. By township, Garfield came in at 435 for the month, which is representing 73% of the calls. East Bay at 18, Acme with, at 18%, Acme at 9% with 52, and then we see out-of-area calls, we just had four. Incidents by station, the leader this month, this past month, was Station One with 29%, followed by Station 11, 27%, Station 12 at 25%, and as you can see there, Station Eight and Nine, both came in just about tied at about 9% there. Next, we have the Garfield Metro EMS complaints. Falls still coming in as one of our highest call types within, under EMS, with 83 calls within the township, 110 within Metro as a whole, followed by difficulty breathing at 51 and 67, and then just, you know, a variety of other medical-type natures, infections, some cardiac issues there, chest pains, general weakness, et cetera. Total for the township for the month was 376 emergency medical calls and 518 total for all of Metro. This evening, we won't have any disparity between MMR and Metro. Just a couple highlights, this past month, we completed our firefighter testing. I mentioned that we were in the process last month when I reported. We wound up with five candidates that were interviewed, went through the whole process, and wound up on our eligibility list, so we have them there. One of the candidates, one of our part-time firefighters, Aiden Camp, he had performed well, and he was offered the full-time position, the open position that we had, so now we're at full staffing. The remainder of the candidates, they're on our list, one of which was a part-time member. The other three expressed interest in working, even though they're still beyond the eligibility list for full-time openings, they expressed interest in working part-time, so that's something that we're gonna pursue with an orientation class in March and hopefully bring them on as part-timers to kind of help bolster the rosters as well. Additionally, under hiring, I reported last month, we were recruiting for our public educator position. We did have significant interest with that, with a large number of applicants, I think it was over 45 at the time, it was advertised pretty widely. We did narrow it down to six candidates that we did interviews with. Following that, we came to a decision that there was one candidate that stood out, at least for us, that we called back for a follow-up interview, and then ultimately offered a position and they accepted, or she accepted. So we have Ms. Katie Berecki took the position, she's scheduled to start March 10th, so we'll be filling that position. Additionally, we did receive a Michigan Township participating plan, one of their TCAP grants, that's our Training Certification and Accreditation Program grant, to cover about 75% of the course fees for our captain attending Staff in Command, so that's 20, over $2,600, so we're happy to receive that. In admin, we're compiling data and preparing our 2024 annual report, which hopefully we will have out by the end of the month by our board meeting. We have our audit for fiscal year 2024, that's gonna begin next week. We have a meeting with the auditors on February 19th. Currently working, still on, working on our apparatus replacement schedule, waiting for safer grant applications that haven't come out, but with some of the things that are going on in the federal government, I expect that they'll be delayed, but I'm sure that they'll be out at some point in time. But that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Yes, Molly?
Not really a question, I'm just wondering if there's a way for you to reflect services given to the nursing homes? Garfield Township has a lot of nursing homes.
Yes.
And so when I'm looking at these statistics, it looks skewed to me, like we have so many more falls, so many more, all of those kinds of issues.
Sure.
Is there a way to reflect, this is our nursing home population, and Garfield Township is the biggest, I don't think East Bay or any of them.
Yeah, we have the addresses, I know that I can get with our IT captain, Captain Spencer Scanlon, he's away at Staff in Command right now, and there's certain ways we can kind of narrow and filter down that information. Since we know the addresses to our nursing facilities, our extended care facilities, it'll be easy for us to draw data for those or from those, so I can get something put together and bring it to you.
Now, we might be able, maybe you guys.
Sure.
Be able to establish some kinds of programs.
Absolutely.
That they can kind of deal with some of their own things. When I look at a pie chart like this, and it shows me that Garfield Township's got all that blue area, well, how much of that is the regular population?
Yeah, actually, we're still, we have targeted a lot of our public education to our nursing home or senior living centers. As a matter of fact, the matter of balance class that Jen Frolik had put together previously, that was pretty much targeted. We did do it at some different township locations, but we did that a lot at our extended care homes with that population, and that was always well-received. People just, you know, a lot of things, like, I didn't really think about, you know, even just my rugs in my kitchen and things like that, that could be trip hazards and stuff, and just the different ways to kind of manage themselves on walking, but that's certainly something that we've done. We're still, even though we have the, Jen's gone and we're awaiting Katie to start, we're still conducting classes at the extended care facility, so. But I, since you brought it up, it is kind of interesting, and Spencer always likes a challenge, so I may ask him to see if he can maybe extrapolate some of that data.
Yeah, if we could get, it's not just falls, I mean, it could be other things that are associated with those facilities.
Absolutely, yeah.
That'd be great, thank you.
We'd be happy to do so. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Just a comment, if anybody is thinking on, in spare time, want to attend the next Metro Board meeting, the time and place has been moved, so it's instead of out at.
East Bay.
East Bay at 9:00 AM, it's at Station 11 at 1:00 PM, and that was done to allow the board members to attend the emergency response workshop at the county, which I believe is at.
10 to noon.
10 to noon.
Yeah.
So it completely, I made that comment to Beth at the DPW meeting, that I said, well, you want to have emergency response workshop, but that directly conflicts with the Metro Fire Board meeting, so I'm glad they rescheduled that. So I don't know if you had anything to do with that, but thank you if you did, so.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, that, and I believe the change has already been posted to the website.
Okay.
So I got an email on it already.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief, thank you. All right, looks like Planning Department Monthly Report, I think, is in our packet, I believe. I've been here to talk to that, unless Molly wants to comment on the planning report.
Molly, do you want to comment on that? What? Planning report.
Planning Department Report, so.
No.
Parks and Rec, again, I don't see anybody from Parks and Rec here, but.
Can I bring something up at this point in time? The information that you got from Chris, in the Township Managers' Report regarding the snow dog, that was brought up at the Parks and Rec meeting. Sean did a very nice presentation on it, and this is something that I know normally we wouldn't need to come in front of the board for because of the cost of it, is under the limit, but they, I suggested that rather than have the board find out, like, we have the snow dog and nobody knew about it, I said it would be nice for the Parks and Rec Commission to bring it back to the board, just to let them know what they wanted, and it's gonna be very helpful to Derek and to Sean, and this is something that they can, when they have encampments or something like that, they can hook a trailer or a sled or whatever onto it, clean up the encampments and bring it out, rather than have to worry about an ATV or anything like that, and it'll be able to use in the snow and in the regular weather and everything, so. I made a suggestion that it would be brought in front of the Township Board, just so they knew, you knew what was going on. I can't remember the cost of it, it was like.
$4,299 for the equipment.
Right.
And then there's some attachments.
Yeah, but I know it's under the $5,000, but, so I just, that's why I suggested that they bring it in front of you, just so you know what they're requesting, and I'm all for it.
All right, and you're gonna talk about that in your report, right, Chris?
Yeah, I will, yep.
All right. Treasurer's report? I think she's not here, but it's in our packet.
Chloe's not here, yeah.
Park's report?
I have submitted my report in writing, if anybody has any questions. We met with our accountant for pre-audit prep today. We get everything ready for when the auditors come, we have all our prepaid's done and everything done for accounting, for her, for the account, for the auditors to go through, and it's a very quick process this way. It went well today and ready for the audit.
All right, thank you.
When's that gonna take place?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
The audit is like, it's in April.
Okay.
It's like the third week in April.
Okay, thank you.
Second or third week in April.
Thank you.
All right. Township Managers' Report.
I provided everybody with a little notes page in front of you, if you wanna follow along. Grand Traverse County Road Commission, I told everybody that would kind of keep you up to date with some big projects, so our engineers connected with them to ask to be involved in the plan for the Cass Road change, which is proposed to be, to occur in 2026, and what they're doing is they're creating a center turn lane between Hartman and South Airport. So, you know, she's discussing with them, are there any public works-type infrastructure that should be going in if they tear the road up? Right now, we don't know if there needs to be any, but, you know, it's on the radar so that we can discuss it and not worry later on, oh, I wish we would've done this. So that discussion is taking place, just so we can plan accordingly, and a couple things I didn't mention on here is, South Airport Road, widening of that, I believe is 28, or 2028, and then also Frankie Road, I think I mentioned in the past, improving that as well, a couple years down the road. So those are like three projects that are kind of on our radar, you know, to be part of in case, you know, we need to add our input or whatever, we can do that in the planning stage. Working with a guy from M.Rail Division regarding some lease agreements that are expired not too long ago regarding properties on Keystone and Cass Road, and.
Long time ago.
Well, not too long ago, but anyways, we have water main that runs across these properties, and, you know, you're talking leases that occurred back in 2002, yep, and for like $8,000 for the whole timeframe, the whole term. Well, those are expired, and they want us to renew those, and they're going to provide us with proposed lease agreements, which, you know, I'll talk with the supervisor, getting them reviewed by legal counsel if we choose to do that. Also, you know, what is a fair amount to charge us? You know, I'm not a realtor, they have a real estate entity with an MDOT that is going to supposedly be involved in this to say, what's a fair amount of money, and that, so it's gonna be reflected in the draft or proposed lease, and they want to do like a five-year lease for each property, so.
And the other one expired?
So one was in 2022, and I'm trying to think, Keystone, 2019?
Wow, and they're just coming back to us now?
So have we paid anything in that amount of time? No?
No, so they're gonna ask that we pay, you know, calculate the monthly rate, whatever the term was, and pay that for the time that we didn't have it in place, so.
It's not our fault.
How about if we just do an easement for that water line and have it be recorded, and, I mean, you can ask the attorney if they'll just let us do that without renting.
Problem solved, right? Yeah.
We won't have to continue with it.
Yeah, all right, yeah. All right, I will do that and see if it's an option.
Mm-hmm, I like that option.
Okay, I will check into that, for sure. Also, we got a grant through Eagle for HVAC equipment upgrades in this building, and unfortunately, they had to all occur after a certain date, I think it was in October, and anything that was done ahead of that didn't qualify for reimbursement, so we had our air conditioning unit upgraded in the summertime, which it needed to be done. And with that being said, there is $25,985 remaining in that grant that we can change the scope of it with Eagle and put it towards something else. So, you know, my suggestion is, is our building committee can get together and decide, is there something else here that could be upgraded, or work with staff, you know, it could even be in our, you know, it could be, just examples, it could be solar power for the parks bathroom. It can be a hybrid plug-in vehicle. There's a lot of different things that you can spend it on, and we just need to figure out what is the best, and so.
Do you want to set up a meeting with the building committee, then?
I'd like to make a suggestion that you really look at updating the heating in the Silver Lake Parks bathroom. We paid like $600 last month to heat it. It was cold last month.
It's electric heat.
It's electric heat. We really need to upgrade that heating in the Silver Lake Park.
Do a solar demonstration on the top and spend the whole thing.
A little wind turbine up there.
Some kind of something.
Do you want to set up a meeting with the building committee and get the suggestions of the building here, and then staff, and.
Yeah, yep, I'll coordinate that.
Set up a meeting with the building committee and see if there's anything that needs to be done here and go from there?
Yeah, I can't think of anything off the top of my head here, but you never know, somebody else might have an idea like she just had, so.
Right.
Yeah, I'll get that coordinated and organized.
Okay.
While you, just setting that meeting up, pull your Parks Department folks, you know, staff, anybody, might be a great idea out there that you, we're not thinking of, you know.
Right.
So, ask around, make, start making a list, start with the bathrooms at the park and make the list.
Yeah.
Yep, I just thought I'd bring that up, so you know. Our staff committee who's working on our website redesign is working with the company who provide a couple proposed designs, and we are looking through them and providing feedback to them. So, you know, the website will be up and running as quickly as it takes for us to be okay with what they give us, and, you know, our proposed changes. Talking with staff, there's always some other ideas that we'd like to see, but we're kind of maybe at the five-yard line ready to score a touchdown as far as getting that off the to-do list, which is good.
A question on that, I know that I took Chloe's place on that, is there any, are you gonna get that feedback to me, too, so I could see it?
Are you talking the?
Website design?
I will send you information about it.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I know I took her place on, I haven't.
I didn't.
Was it the website design or just the logo design?
This is the website.
Okay, did you take over the website or the logo?
She gave me everything.
Probably the whole thing, right?
The whole thing.
Yeah, okay. I will get you info.
Thank you.
And then, as far as our soil erosion, we need to enter into an MOU with Grand Traverse County so they can enforce the ordinance until we're completely transitioned. So that's something I'm working with the county administrator and their attorney to draft up, and then plan on bringing it back to this board for approval to enter into that. You know, our thoughts are, is all the existing permits that are open, that they keep, and they see them to the end, and anything brand-new, we'll take them on, and it will be, you know, better for us to kind of take them on as they come, rather than have this whole bucket full of things that they have to sort through.
Right.
So that's gonna be my recommendation to the county administrator, and I don't see, think he's gonna have a problem with that, but they're gonna draft the MOU that I'll bring back to you, most likely next meeting. And then the Parks and Rec Commission had a recommendation, a request to purchase a snow dog that Denise had mentioned, and you saw a picture of it, and she did a good job explaining the need. What we had found is Lark Lawn and Garden has, they sell that machine, they have one in stock, they were selling it for about five grand. Our park staff found it cheaper on the manufacturer's website of $41.99, and Lark agreed to allow us to buy it at a cheaper price than originally posted to include a $100 preparation fee, so $4,299 for the unit. And then the Parks folks also, you gotta buy a sled that attaches to it to haul the stuff, and then they also recommended that we purchase with it a grooming attachment that allows us to groom cross-country trails at our parks. So, and that is like 50% off right now, I don't know if they're trying to clear it out or what, but this might be a way to improve recreation in the parks, you know, we haven't done that before, so. So, I think, um, w- what I'd like from you is it follows our purchasing policy where I have authority under the policy to purchase it, 'cause under five thousand, we don't have to get quotes. You know, in the past, being on this board, a lot of things have come to us that are under that limit. So, I gotta kinda figure out what this board would like to see and have me manage purchasing things. It fits within our budget.
That was partially my fault, supervisor, because I said it should come before this board. Because if someone sees it and says, well, I didn't know we bought that, I just wanted it for a clarification to let our board know what the Parks and Recs is purchasing, so.
Yeah, man, I'm comfortable. If it's in your purchasing agreement, just, you know, just more informational, hey, just so you know, I'm buying, I'm buying this, you know, and, and if we're really against it, we'll let you know, but I, I like knowing, it's good to know. Like you said, if we're out and we see Derek and, and Sean out ice or something, I mean, out on the trail grooming, grooming trails, uh, you know, we say, where'd they get that thing? You know, it'd be nice to know. So, no, I think it's, that's a great idea. I like this cross-country ski grooming idea. That could be a, you know, a real, people might really pick up on that too, so.
Do we need a motion for that or?
I think if it's in his purchasing power, I don't think we do.
Okay.
Just an add.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll give them, uh, if authorization to go get it, uh, picked up tomorrow. Thank you. Um, and then I was officially inducted into Rotary Club today.
Yay!
For the sponsorship and, um, yeah, it's, uh, it's gonna be fun. You know, I'm looking forward to community activities and meeting new people and developing personally and all the good stuff that that club will offer, so it's a good thing.
Good. Congratulations.
Thank you. And that's all I have for my report.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Okay, as, as usual, supervisor's report will be-
You know what? I apologize.
Go ahead.
I had an attachment.
You have a little attachment.
Survey?
Yeah. So, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, so, as you know, we have a, a agreement with Traverse Connect to do economic development business in the township for us and, um, help us grow businesses and the, um, you know, economic development. And part of that agreement is to survey our businesses. So, they came up with this, um, proposed survey, which I wanted to show you to see if you had any issues with it. If you have any changes that you'd like to see. And at this point, this is just educating you. And then, um, at our next meeting, um, I would like to put it on, um, an action item part in the agenda where you're gonna make a motion to approve, uh, them moving forward with it. We, what we feel is best is rather than just put it on our website and say, okay, fill this out, we really wanna be proactive in targeting actual businesses that we have on file, maybe through assessing. Or just we have a, a list, um, you know, currently that we can target them. And I think we'll get better data that way.
I think so too.
Um, and Traverse Connect, you know, we, we contract with them, 'cause they are the, you know, the experts in this area. So, they came up with the survey. And, uh, you know, I don't know, if you, if you have changes that you'd like to see, let me know, but I'm gonna kinda rely on them for their expertise in guiding us and, you know, what the survey should look like, so. But I think, um, you know, I think between today and, uh, maybe a week from now, if you'd like to see some changes, get with me and then we will make those and put them in the packet in two weeks.
Yeah, Molly.
Just a question. Did they request information from some people? Is this something that we're going to use in the future? We've got like one response to how many full-time employees does your business currently employ? And we got one response and it says a hundred percent's checked in and we've got something else about, uh, tell us about the property where your business operates.
This is just a draft. How was it gonna be?
They got one response. So, did they, what, what's that? Some of them have zero responses. I'm assuming it didn't go out, but clarify some.
It's a draft. It's like an online Survey Monkey survey. In order for them to allow them to show up to be printed, they had to put something in there.
Put something?
Yeah, so this isn't the actual survey. This is just purely for the questions and the answers, um, that, that's related to it. So, sorry for not clarifying that.
Some had one, some had zero.
Yeah, they just, that was arbitrary, so that way it could show up and they could print it.
Thanks.
Yep.
All right.
A quick question. Is Traverse Connect sending this out and summarizing the results back to us?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Anything else on that? Thanks, Chris.
Yep.
All right, supervisor's report. Couple of things. Uh, met with Matt Cowell a week ago, uh, tried to get him up to date again on the, the Commons and, uh, Barnes Water situation. We, we spent quite a lot of time getting him up to speed on, on the issues we're dealing with and, and, uh, and what it's gonna take to move everything forward. We're, we're obviously waiting, um, for a response from the city. The letter to the city went out, um, on the thirty-first and we're just waiting. As of this morning, we had not got confirmation that we are or not on the eighteenth, uh, meeting. We're waiting for that confirmation and, uh, asked Chris to send the mayor an email today. And the other commissioner's just sending a letter again and saying, you know, asking the mayor that, uh, we be on that agenda. We just haven't gotten confirmation yet, so I think we've done that. And then we had a BPW finance meeting last week. And Chuck would probably be a lot more familiar with this. The, uh, the subject that's been kicking around for quite a while about an authority is, is coming back up again about trying to make, uh, the BPW or the, you know, the DPW, I'm not sure which, an authority. And so, the finance committee was gonna request that the BPW board consider hiring a consultant to analyze that. Jennifer was at that meeting and did provide, uh, some previous analysis that was done on that. And I think the last time it was done, it was deemed to not really be a, a, a big idea, but I'm not sure I wasn't involved, so. Uh, so we're gonna revisit that subject, um, from a BPW standpoint.
Still a question on that?
Yeah.
So, if, uh, DPW becomes an authority, can they levy taxes? Is that part of the scope?
I, it depends on how the authority's set up. I mean, it depends on what, what, you know, all the townships would have to approve the, um, and what the authority looks like. And so, that, those, I think that, Chuck, maybe you could answer that.
For the water and sewer part, it would be rate payers.
Yeah.
Okay.
If there were additional parts to the Board of Public Works, like in the past, they handled, um, waste management, things like that. There could be a tax involved, but I don't even know if we wanna go back to that.
Just other authorities. And when they become an authority, they have the ability to levy a tax, like the Commons.
Beta and other ones that have done theirs.
Like other, other ones.
I don't think the contention is to create a taxing authority.
Okay.
You know, I think, and, uh, 'cause there was some discussion about, you know, be, the, the, the burden of creating and, and sustaining that authority would fall on the townships. I don't think the city would fall into an authority on something like that.
We made the offer to the city some years ago.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, you know, uh, 'cause I think that would involve including the water treatment plant in the authority. And I don't think there was a lot of interest in them doing that, so. So, anyway, that, that subject is coming back up, uh, so more to come on that. And then last thing I had was just a reminder, uh, two weeks from tonight, we have our board meeting. And then two weeks from tomorrow night, we have the joint meeting with the planning commission. So, uh, back-to-back meetings in two weeks, so. Are they both six? Do we move the planning commission one up to six?
Yes.
Okay. So, the back-to-back six o'clock meetings, so. And that's all I have. All right, unfinished business. Consideration of purchasing tablets for the township board. Chris?
Okay, um, I provided a report or, yeah, a report indicating the cost. I think, uh, at our last meeting, it was pretty clear we wanted to go with iPads. And we chose to do the non, um, cellular type. It's the, you know, Gen ten and also, um, we looked at the cost of a, a pencil that, you know, Trustee Lap had pointed out would be sufficient. And then a, a heavy-duty case, OtterBox, um, three sixty leak case, I found a pretty good price for that as well. So, when you look at the, um, table on the top where it says, purchase option without protection plan for eight devices, that would include everybody on the board and one for myself. The total cost down there in the right corner includes, you know, eight of everything, iPad case and the pencil. And then below that is the same equipment except for adding a protection plan which lasts for two years. And, uh, the total cost is three thousand one hundred forty-three eighty-four. And then on the back of that document is the, what's covered under the Apple Care Plus plan. And it looks to be like if you have an event, like if you were to drop it and break it, you'd have to pay twenty-nine dollars to have it repaired or replaced. And it looks like after a couple of events, they don't want you to, you know, keep nickel and dime and then with replacing and stuff, they kind of, you have exhausted it. So, it's like you're two, two situations or events and you're done. I, I think it's important to do some level of protection. You could at least start with a two-year protection plan and then after two years, y- you would have to renew it. Um, and then when you renew it typically off Apple's side, I think it's like fifty-nine dollars per year. And that's something that we can cross down the road. But it might be wise to, the supervisor's point, when we talked about it last time, at least start with a two-year protection.
For five hundred and fifty bucks, yeah.
Yeah, it's worth it.
You could replace two brand-new devices with as much as the protection plan costs. Pretty much. I mean, I, I don't, I-
Play the odds.
Yeah.
I'd play the odds, but that's-
Yes, it's, it's-
What do you think?
I'm sorry?
So, what do you think?
I, I think the protection plan is good.
Yeah, I mean, initially, I think, you know, we see how we do after the first couple of years if we, if we have pretty good luck and we're, you know, uh, you know, I think all in all, you're protecting, uh, the, the odds of us breaking a bunch of them, hopefully not very much, but, uh-
Always that chance.
There is, you know, or the device might, you know, I'm not sure how much of it's under warranty or if it just fails. I think it's, if that's included in that or not, so.
Y- yeah, if the device fails, um, it could be fixed or replaced.
Right.
Yeah.
Not just necessarily breaking, but, but actually something going wrong with it, so. But overall, I think, I think we look at what the, I'd like to, I don't wanna create work for anybody, but just kinda back of the napkin math, what it costs each, each month to do the packets with the paper and then the timeframe. We're spending a lot of money on, on packets, so we're gonna offset a pretty good part, offset a pretty good portion of this by, by not having packets and postage and ma- and paper and that kinda thing as well, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we purchase the options with a two-year Apple Care Plus protection plan for eight devices and accessories for a total of three thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-four cents.
Any support for that?
You gonna support it?
Well, I don't know that I would wanna buy the protection, but, um-
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna either way. I mean, I've, I'm used to an iPad and using that. Huh?
Can you fix the machines under this protection plan? So that, you know, if they-
Yeah, or if you drop it, it gets replaced.
Yeah, we either-
Not just the damaged part, but-
Yeah, let's, yeah, we, we should have either a, a second, even if we vote no on it, with, to, to further discuss.
Okay, I'll give a second-
Okay.
For a discussion.
Yep. So, you're, you're suggesting to, go with the program but just not, not purchase the protection plan?
Yeah, seventy bucks times eight, it's five, five hundred, almost five hundred, a little over five fifty.
Two-year.
But if you break three of them in one year.
Right, or you could break none of them in-
Right, I mean, if, if you're damaged.
Aren't they covered in one-year warranty?
Yeah, but if you break it, they still, I mean, if you break it, you still have to pay for it.
I'd just like to point out-
Go ahead.
We're not taking these out in the field. Right? We're bringing them to an office building.
Chris and, Chris and I plan it, 'cause when I go to, when I'll be going to, you know, Fireboard BPW-
Sure.
Chris and I'll be-
But not a construction site.
No, correct.
Right.
I mean, I, I, I could go either way. I mean, I understand the benefits of the plan, but I also, if we get, I feel more comfortable with a good case, that we're not gonna be breaking a lot of them. That's why I suggested, we, I wouldn't, I'd be voting for the, the, the plan all day long if you went with no cases. 'Cause I guarantee without a case, somebody's gonna break it.
Absolutely.
But with a good case, uh, very likely, we won't break any of them.
Can I rescind that motion?
Well, when we vote on the motion, just vote, you know, so, yeah, vote it down and then we'll go, we'll start over. So, uh, it is a roll call vote on that end, so, 'cause it's weird.
Schmuckle?
I'm gonna say yes.
Agustinelli?
No.
Corn?
No.
Lap?
No.
L. McManus?
No.
And Jay McManus?
No. Okay, motion is defeated.
Sure, make me look like the bad guy.
Well, I'm gonna make the next one and vote for him without the-
Okay, then I'll make the next motion. I make a motion, we purchase the option without protection plan for eight devices and accessories for a total of two thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-four cents.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion was made and supported. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, uh, motion made and supported to go with the eight devices without protection plan for a total of two thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-four cents. And can we have a roll call?
Schmuckle?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
L. McManus?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
And Jay McManus?
Yes. All right, thank you. Thanks, Chris, for the work on that.
Yes, thank you, Chris.
Yep.
When do we expect these?
So, I will order them tomorrow. And then as they come in, I'll work with everybody to get them set up, make sure everybody's comfortable.
Okay.
And if you feel like you, uh, next meeting, it's not set up, you're not comfortable, then we'll just work with Karen to get you a packet, right, and to, you know-
Okay.
Kind of transition into-
Sorry, Molly.
I think he was looking at me.
All right. Uh, kinda to go along with that topic, uh, we have under new business, the consideration of adopting a new township technology equipment policy. You gonna take this one, Chris?
Yeah, yep. So, this is a culmination of many sample policies, um, just to cover the, you know, guidelines for general use, um, how they're issued, you know, that they're being monitored. Uh, what do we do when, you know, employee is separated or, um, you know, we wanna take the device back, reassign it? So, it just covers all facets of the device from, you know, issuing it out to getting it back and what do we do in the middle? So, and like I said, it's a combination of many samples that I've, we pulled bits and pieces of to come up with this, so. And I'm just looking for any questions, comments, thoughts, or, or a motion to approve it.
Is this, would be, is this, do we have a policy for all of our staff? Is this what we're proposing for this policy that applies to all staff?
Yes.
Not just the board?
Correct, all staff, yeah.
But it would apply to the board as well?
Yes.
I make a motion that we adopt the Charter Township of Garfield Digital Device and Equipment Policy.
All support?
Motion made and supported to adopt the, uh, digital device and equipment policy presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Item B under new business, consideration of adopting updates to the employee handbook.
Again, uh, you've heard me talk about this previous meetings. February twenty-first, the law for sick time goes into effect. And so, we had to update our handbook to, to fit that law. And so, when we, as a personnel committee, met several times to go through this, we looked at all the sections that would be applicable, applicable to the Sick Time Act, um, and adjusted them accordingly. So, what you see here in red is, um, or in your handout, the strike through our current sections, like, uh, section fifty-point-zero, which is at the beginning of eight B, we propose getting that, rid of that whole section. Because a lot of times you'll have a, a provisional, um, timeframe with union contracts and they're protected. We feel like, you know, if employee comes here, we're going to, um, address issues as they pop up immediately. You know, we're, we're gonna deal with them in the first week, the first month, second month. We'll just address them as they come up. We didn't think that there needed to be a period of time. So, we recommend striking that. You know, you'll see that in union contracts a lot and we don't have a union here anymore.
Yeah, I think when this was written, we had the union too, so, yeah.
Yeah, the handbook, if you look at it, is a lot from a union, like, like if we had a union. So, I think as we look through the handbook as a personnel committee over time, um, you'll probably see us recommending a lot of changes. And-
Add one point to that too, just to the ninety days. Is everyone is an employee at will? Having this ninety-day jeopardizes your employment at will status. Just to add that out there. It assumes that it changes after ninety days.
And if you flip the page over, um, you know, we kinda just cleaned some s- stuff up near the top. And we made the length of service, um, for vacation, uh, more clear. And we just, you know, the, the, um, the red areas that aren't underliner edition- And we just, you know, the, the red areas that aren't underlying our additions, everything that's black is existing language. It wasn't touched. So, a few changes in one, Section 100, and then going into 100.1, that's where there were a lot of changes, because that really had the most applicable to the Earn Sick Time Act. We changed it from paid sick, personal days to the Earn Sick Time Act. And then, everything that you see in that section allows us to fit the law and also, you know, the requirements that the law tells us we have to follow as far as earn sick time.
Hey, Chris, real quick, just to back up to Section 100, I think I have a grasp of it. So, you're proposing on the vacation, instead of having to wait till after one year, they would start accruing on the day they're hired? Let's say they're hired on July 1st, then they would accrue one week by the end of the year? Is that what you're basically saying?
Correct.
Instead of having to wait a full year? Okay, I'm good with that. I just want to make sure I understood it correctly. Thank you.
Yes. So, everything as far as language there on 100.1, just, it complies with the law, and that's why you see it. And then, we also had to strike stuff that was no longer relevant.
Chris, can I make, oh, sorry, one comment on Section 100. Section 10, I believe you want to change supervisors' approval to manager approval. Township manager approval?
Yeah, I don't want to have to approve vacations. That can be Chris's deal.
Yep.
That's all I have on that one.
So, I have a question on this, Chris. I'm a little confused here. So, can we, I know that now with the sick leave policy, it's going to be coming up in legislation, that they can occur, they occur at per-pay period, not all at once. So, is this going to be, like, are entitled a 92 hours of earned sick time annually with pay as January 1st of each year, new employees received a prorated amount in their first year of service? So, you're saying they're still going to get it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
We're not following the legislation?
So, there was a lot of confusions upfront, and as the Department of Labor started putting out information, you know, they're not against it. You can do that as long as it's, it's very clear in there. And then, also, you can recoup, if you do it upfront, and we've got language in here that if somebody were to leave, like, in June, what would have been the difference between the accrual from January to June? You can recoup that from the employee.
Okay.
But, you know, this was something that was debated over months, and I think, I think we're following the law, doing it the way that we're doing it.
So, the thing, I guess the question I have is, they're going to get sick leave, not personal leave time now, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, we, right now, we front-load their personal time as 92 hours.
Right.
We were talking how it would be detrimental to a lot of our employees that plan on this-
Oh, yeah.
-use it. And we didn't want to do that. As long as the law allows us to do this, and as long as we can track that we gave it to them, and what, when it was used, and be able to show that with our system, that we did give them the 92 hours, which we only have to give them 72, but that, as long as we can track it and show that that was used as a sick time, then we're good.
So, on, I think it's JF, I don't even know which one it is. It's kind of like, so, let's just say I get 92 hours in January, and I've used that 92 hours in June, and then I leave. So, 48 hours is going to have to be paid back by the employee, then?
Yes.
Okay, I understand. I got it.
The one additional piece that meets the law, you already, Garfield Township already had a policy that was over and above what the law requires, except for there was no provision presently for part-time people. So, this is adding an accrual based by hours worked for part-time people to meet the law if it does in fact pass.
Yeah, yeah.
If it doesn't pass, we're adding a little benefit for part-time people.
What, how many part-time people do we have?
Three.
And it does not include election workers, just part-time? Okay. Because they talked about that might have been the case at one point.
Right. So, it's a nice benefit for part-time people.
Well, you want to keep our employees. I mean, that's just it, you know? I mean, we have great employees, and you want to keep them.
The other piece to pay attention to on this, I believe there has been a past practice of cashing this out at the end of the year that you didn't use. That has been removed. So, it carries over. You can't use more than 92 hours per year without his approval.
Manager's approval.
But you can't cash it out at the end of the year.
But you can carry it over.
We, we have to allow it to carry over. The law states that we have to allow it to carry over.
Now, upon retirement or leaving, do they get paid all or half of it?
They said 40 hours.
Most you would be paid out is 40 hours.
Okay, okay.
So, that would be the liability to the township at most.
Yeah, but if they had 120 hours, we're only paying 40.
Exactly.
Okay, okay. Great, thank you.
Now, are we, are we looking for, is this ready for a motion to approve? Are we at that point?
Are you feeling good about it?
Chris, hello.
Well, I'm just looking, sorry, I'm trying to find the part about the 40 hours being paid out.
It's down on the bottom of page one, or it's on their letter that they get.
Section 100.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we haven't got that far yet, okay.
Yeah.
So, we added, if you go on Section 100.2 holidays, and go down to the bottom, that's new language, again, to cover part-time employees who may be normally scheduled to work when a holiday comes up. So, we wanted them to, we'd like them to be compensated for however many hours that they were going to work that day, and for the rate of pay.
I have a part-time employee that works several part-time jobs, and so, they can't make up that Mondays that we have off. We have a Monday off, they work Mondays, they work every Monday, but they can't come back and work on Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, because they have a part-time, they're part-time job.
That's a huge benefit for a part-time person.
It's not a huge liability for us.
No, it's not. But you want to keep your people.
I do.
Absolutely.
And then, moving on, the last piece is a notification letter that we, by law, have to provide to new hires and our current employees. And the content of it is very specific in the law. So, that's what guided what we have in here. So, that's all brand-new. And will become part of the handbook as another attachment at the end.
So, when this is completed, then all employees will get the new handbook, and they have to sign for it.
Yeah, the plan would be to do a staff meeting to talk about all this. They kind of know it's coming, they've been kind of prepped. But to have an all-staff meeting to further discuss at that point, give this to everybody.
Have them sign off on it.
Yep, keep track of that. We've given it to them and notified them.
All sign off.
Yep.
A letter, or this letter, or one of those, something like that. Okay, perfect.
Yeah, we have a sign-off letter, then, that will be attached to this.
Yeah, so, the plan would be is that new hires would sign this, I'd make a copy of it, put it in their file. And then, I'm just going to put a sign-in sheet for everybody on the date that we meet and keep track of that and put it in their files.
Okay.
So, we've got a plan.
Do we need a motion to have this?
I have two minor questions on this letter. On the first two bullet points, the first bullet point, you say all employees will accrue one hour of pay time for every 30 hours worked. It's not completely accurate.
Nope, we've got to change that.
You got to put a separate bullet point for part-time than the one for full-time.
Our full-time's get it paid upfront.
So, technically, if you look at the law, it talks about full-time and part-time still accrued at that rate.
But that's what the law says, but we give more than the law, so that, that is not accurate.
Okay. What would you like to see?
Just two separate bullet points. Or you could say, we'll accrue at least one hour. You could just put the at least in there.
Okay.
Because it's covering the law. Even though they're getting more, who's going to complain that they get more versus less?
Yep.
I'm not sure anyone, but-
Okay.
And then, on the second bullet point, it says accrued sick time can be used in one-half hour, but then it says one-quarter in parentheses increment. So, is it half or quarter?
Quarter.
Okay.
Use in-
That's all I have on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Good catch.
Do we need a motion for this?
Are you guys ready for a motion on this, Chris?
Yeah, unless anybody has more questions.
We'd just like you to approve that these changes can be made.
Yeah, changes can be made.
We're going to come back with more, we're going through it all, but we'd like to get this done before the Sick Act goes into-
Right, okay.
So, I would make the motion that we adopt the updates for the, as of right now, for the updates for the employees handbook, as presented.
All support.
Okay, motion made, supported to approve the adoption, adopting the correct, the changes, I guess, what we're looking for here, the updates to the employee handbook. And that would be, you know, as it applies to sick leave and vacation time, all of them in the packet tonight. Do we need to note the changes to the letter, or not?
I, I think as long as your motion includes the edits that were recommended, I think we're fine, because it's all together.
All right, any further discussion on that? All right, hearing none. I think we need a roll call to win.
Schmuckel.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thanks for the whole committee for working on that one.
Yes, thank you very much.
Now, the, and it sounds like you've researched if the, even if they make changes to the law, the changes recommending fit within what the new law is going to look like?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, that takes us to our second public comment. So, we will open up the second public comment, see if anybody has any thing they'd like to come up and say.
She says no. Lauren says no.
Both of our public are shaking their heads, so we will close public comment, and this is, ask if there's any other business to come before the board tonight. Hearing none. The motion adjourned.
I'm moved.
Adjourned.
Bye. Goodbye.